7:01, let's call the board of the meeting on the District 208 Board of Education. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, clear roll call, please.
Here.
Ms. Skiaska.
Ms. Rosca.
Here.
Slack.
Here.
Ms. Naukai.
Here.
And Ms. Seales.
Here. Do we have recognitions this evening, Dr. Skinkis?
There are no specific recognitions. We have some student reports.
Okay, let's move on to visitor's statements then. Do we have visitor's statements for this evening, I believe? I'm going to read a statement while you guys come on up. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor's statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. So, you guys are dressed for the weather?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, everyone. We are students of the RBHS Theater Community.
And we are currently putting on the show A Christmas Carol.
You can see us in the RB auditorium from November 2nd through 5th.
All proceeds come back to the RBHS Theater Community to help us in our endeavors.
And we would absolutely love it if you came and watched us. And God bless us, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, who, your characters, real quick?
I'm playing Ruth.
I'm playing Topper.
I'm playing one of the women.
Hi, Tim.
Martha slash boy.
Fred.
Ghost of Christmas Present.
Okay, and tell us the dates one more time because you may not be on the microphone.
November 2nd through 5th.
November 2nd through 5th, okay. We've got it. I've seen the social media on it, so I will certainly be there, and I imagine many of my colleagues will as well.
They will be there.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and, if everyone's okay, we'll move Student Association up on the agenda as well, just to... Oh, do any other visitor comments? Thank you. I apologize.
That's okay. I'll be quick. Maggie White, I am on board of the Music and Theater Sponsors. Just want to reinforce the show on November 2nd through 5th, 7:00 p.m. The matinee on Sunday is at ooh, 2:00? Also wanted to just reiterate, we are looking for any volunteers, concessions, sponsors. We sell concessions, candy, water, popcorn, snacks for the kids. This is going to be a very busy week. They're going to be here till like 7:00, 7:30 tomorrow, tech crew even later, so appreciate any snacks, chips, granola bars, whatever would help them out and avoid them missing queues going to the vending machine. So, we appreciate your support either way and look forward to seeing you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Very soon, yes, thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay.
Hi, my name is Vittora Gentilla, and I'm president of the Choir Board and Triumph Board here at RB. And I'll just be giving a few updates on what's been going on in the music department. For choir, we just submitted 20 chorus auditions and eight vocal jazz auditions for ILME, and district results came out, and most of us are going and got in. The Vocal Jazz District event is November 11th, and the Chorus District event is November 18th. Triumph's been going great. We have so many new people this year, I think like upwards of 50. We had initiation last Friday. It went amazing. The whole band room was filled with people, and it was just such a great environment. In jazz band this year, we are trying a new system in the classroom where Mr. Baum and Mr. Loeb are teaching different ensembles in the same class period, and it's been going great. We have one that's jazz band and one that's jazz ensemble. So, jazz ensemble is a little more challenging and counts for an honors credit. It's been going amazing. It's so much fun. We're getting ready for our next concert on November 30th at Hauser, and we just got our new holiday music for the holiday concert on December 6th and 7th, and it's just been going great. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any additional public comment? Seeing none. Are we comfortable taking the essay out of order?
Sure.
No objection?
Yes.
Why don't you guys come on up? Good evening, and thank you so much for having us tonight. We were so lucky that actually all of us were able to be here tonight.
Okay, I'm going to start us off and kind of recap what our homecoming week looked like. So, overall, our homecoming was a very great success. We had a lot of participation in the Spirit Week. In the past few years, we have extended Spirit Week into the Monday after, and we have a pajama day to just kind of end off homecoming. And there was a lot of participation throughout the entire week plus that Monday after. The pep rally was also a huge success. We played some fun games, lots of students getting just hyped up for a homecoming, excited for the football game that night. And then also, RBTV played a really big part in our pep rally. They made about a 10-minute video that kind of recapped the quarter plus, included some grade level competition games, which was very fun. Everyone has been talking about the video. The student that made it has been getting a lot of great compliments. And then on top of the pep rally, the dance was a very big success. A lot of student attendance was great to see, and we also had a couple new things such as the 360 camera and a photo booth, which was great.
Okay, can you remember to tell us your name when you come up, just in what role you play in the essay?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. I'm Bella Ventura, and I'm the vice president.
Thank you.
So, I'm Emily Hernandez, and I'm the president. I'll starting, we're going to start talking about like our community outreach over the next couple of weeks, starting with the blood drive. The blood drive will be run by Naomi and I, and this will be the first of our usually two to three blood drives. One happens in November, another one in February, and then if we can squeeze one in, we'll do one in May. It is planned for Wednesday, November 8th. We unfortunately have had pretty low participation in the past couple of years since COVID, so a big goal of ours is just rallying students, and I think it's just students this time around. I think next time we might reach out to the community, but rallying students to come and donate if they're over the age of 16, if they meet all like the weight requirements and health requirements. So, we've already started promoting that within Student Association and being a part of our committee. Those members are continuing to reach out past our club and into the rest of the school, kind of promoting it. We will be hosting sign-ups for the blood drive next Wednesday and Thursday, and then also Thursday morning before school. And if all goes well this year, donors will be entitled to a free ice cream at Covers.
Okay.
Might want to get in on that.
So, my name is Alex Jacobs. I'm the student spokesperson on the exec board this year, and I'm talking about the cards for the veterans that will be kicking off Friday, November 10th. The committee will be held with me and Lucy. This event will benefit veterans at Hines Hospital at Fisher House. We are publicizing this event within Student Association, and we're all asking staff, classes, athletic teams to participate in this event as well. These cards will be personalized to express our gratitude for the veterans that have served our country and make sure that we are thinking about them over the holidays.
I'm Hazel Hall. I am the treasurer, and I will be running the Thanksgiving baskets community with Bella. We have done this in years past, and it has been a great success, so we are hoping to keep that up this year. Essentially, Thanksgiving baskets are everything essential for a Thanksgiving meal, including the turkey or a gift card for the turkey, potatoes, et cetera, other stuff. And we deliver all the baskets to Community Support Services in Brookfield. The Thanksgiving basket collection will end on November 15th, and we are starting within the next couple of weeks, but we are focusing on the other committees a little bit more heavily right now. We are only right now currently working on getting participation and generating interest within the school. How it works is that the teachers and staff that are interested can create a basket within their classes, or choose to donate money, or purchase the $20 gift card for the turkey. We hope to have both teachers and students participate in this, so it's a big community, RB community opportunity. We, our goal this year is to get 30, oh, 30-plus baskets to CSS. That has been a pretty constant figure in past couple of years, so we're hoping to remain at that. And it is especially important for us to, you know, help around our RB community, so this fundraiser is a really special part of the holiday seasons for our club.
Thank you.
I'm Naomi Galas. I'm the secretary on the exec board, and this year, there's something coming in late November, the Coat and Blanket Drive, which is run by all six members of the exec board. And this is where the teachers let us know if they want to participate, and we bring a box for their classroom, and so that them and their students can bring things like coats, hats, gloves, scarves, blankets, and boots. And then we are collecting through November 20th to December 7th, and all of, we're hoping to collect 200-plus items that we can bring to the Salvation Army, or, yeah, the Salvation Army. And then from there, the families get to come and like shop for the stuff that we've brought, and also things like food and just other supplies that they'll need for the winter, so, yeah.
And at the end of this first quarter, we collected our first notes of acknowledgement, which if you guys don't know, notes of acknowledgement is where students can write notes, you know, expressing their gratitude, thanking staff members, not just teachers, you know, cafeteria workers, janitors, everybody in the building for, you know, everything they've done over the first quarter. So, it was a huge success this quarter. We had over 100 notes, so we're hoping to keep that number up. We hope to keep momentum up in the next quarter and throughout the rest of the year. And then even looking farther ahead, we're going to start planning some winter events for a second semester, so, yeah, we hope to, yeah, sorry, we hope to have another great quarter.
Great, thank you.
And I'm Lucy Drunk. I am the Director of Communications.
Thank you. Any questions?
Outside homecoming still a success?
Yes.
Yes, we love it. I actually, I'm actually going inside for it. You guys have had great weather since it moved outside.
Yes.
We did.
Yes.
Amazing, alright. You got a, you got a new addition this week, but I think, are you guys speaking on the new thing in the cafeteria?
Yes.
Big hit?
Yes, so far.
It might be a good blood drive reward instead of going off.
To Covers, right? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Why don't we move on then to the Student Advisors, just so that we're all in the spirit of information sharing? Does anyone mind giving your report right now, and Dr. Freitas is not here this evening, so it's all you?
So, I'll be starting, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Dr. Freitas delivering the principal's report.
Okay.
So, under Teaching and Learning for October, tomorrow, Wednesday, October 25th, we have our Practice SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Exam, which is the Practice SAT that all juniors will be taking in building tomorrow. Students are expected to be in the field house for their alternate assignment location by 7:55. They're expected to bring a fully charged, school-issued Chromebook. Please note that no personal devices are allowed. Students may bring a pen or pencil, and RB will be providing scratch paper for any work to be done. Students may bring a snack or water, but it must be stored under the desk, and no internet-enabled devices such as smartphones or smartwatches will be allowed within the testing areas, and they will be confiscated before the test.
Can they bring a calculator?
I believe the testing software has a built-in calculator for whenever a question is needed. Moving on to School Culture and Operations, in November, on the, on Friday the 10th, we have our Veterans Day Celebration. At 8:30, there will be a breakfast for the veterans in the Alumni Lounge, followed by the Assembly at 9:30, and then classroom visits right after the Assembly at 10:00. And the classroom visits will be veterans pairing up with teachers to discuss professional responsibilities and connect with students. Moving on to Activities and Athletics, in October, just an hour ago today, Tuesday, October 24th, the Student Services Team was involved in a college cost workshop where students were informed about cost of college and different supports to mitigate those costs. And looking forward into November, on Wednesday, November 1st, there is a college planning tips for freshmen from 7, or 6 to 7:00 p.m. in the Little Theater. Thursday through Saturday, November 2nd through 4th, as the Theater Department came in and said, the fall play, A Christmas Carol, will be hosted starting at 7:00 p.m. And then that Sunday, November 5th, the Christmas Carol will be at 2:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Tickets are $5 for students and $10 for adults. Monday, November 6th, is the official start date of our winter sports and athletics. And then, as Vidi mentioned earlier, there was a reschedule for the Hauser Jazz Festival, and that will now be Thursday, November 30th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Hauser Junior High. And that concludes the principal's report.
Good job. Joe, way to pay the 200 questions. Nice job.
Thank you. Kayla?
Sorry, my Chromebook just sat on me.
Oh, no.
For Student Advisors, Board of Education Report, for the month of October, for Teaching and Learning, Thursday, October 19th, Parent/Teacher Conferences. I know, for my parents, it went super well, and I heard that other parents really enjoyed having that online version communicating to the teachers because it helps a lot more with like jobs, and especially if parents have like long rides from like, from work to home. I know that helped between that slot to just like be able to go home, check in with their students, teachers, and be able to have that online to have a better form of like, just communication and then also presence for students to be there with their teachers. And then for School Culture and Operations in October, on Monday, this past Monday, on the 23rd, we had the opening of our coffee bar. I tried it today. It was honestly amazing. I liked the coffee.
What is the name of the coffee bar? That's what I am...
The Cafe.
The Cafe, yeah.
The Cafe.
We didn't really get, I don't know how they land that name.
Okay.
But I liked it. I, I thought it was super good.
Simple.
Yeah. And then on November, on Wednesday through Thursday, 1st through 2nd, Ola's is hosting an Ofrenda, an altar, in the school atrium. It's also, they're also having some teachers, if they would like, to set up a picture of a loved one so that we can present it for Dia de los Muertos, which is also from November 1st to November 2nd. Dia de los Muertos is celebrated a lot in Mexico, where it's a day where we appreciate a loved one or an animal or a close family friend who has passed, and we celebrate them by having their picture up, having some candles, having their favorite food, anything to remind us of what they loved. And then for Activities and Athletics, in October, Wednesday, 18th, Band and Orchestra Concert, Mariachi Band Club had their debut. Congratulations to all the performers, Bulldogs. And then on Monday, 23rd, Latin American History and Ola students went on a field trip to the National Museum of Mexican Fine Arts and the Chicago neighborhood of Pilsen to walk around the neighborhood, look at some murals that they have around in the neighborhood, talk about the art, talk about the significance, the history, and what it means in Latino culture, for students to learn more about background, and also to give the students a wider or a better perspective of what the class of Latin American history teaches and why is it important to learn more about that subject. And then congratulations to our conference champions in the following sports, boys and girls cross-country.
And girls volleyball.
And girls volleyball.
And girls volleyball, sorry. But that concludes the Student Advisory Report.
No, that was very comprehensive. Thank you.
Very good, Kayla. Thank you.
Yes, thank you both. Any questions, comments? Okay, then going back, Dr. Skinkis' discussion, information on our district goals. We need an update on those.
So, I've just been providing, I've been asking the admin team to provide the one-page chart, and then I've been asking them to add any comments in bold. You can see the weekly blast on the communication. That's one that goes on, working directly on with Ms. Fletcher. Dr. Freitas and Ms. Augustine updated it. They did the SEL survey on 10/17, so you can see, this is just a short progress check for all the board members.
Any questions or comments from anyone on this? No? Okay, thank you. The Annual Financial Report's a first read. We're not quite there yet, but...
Yes, good evening. It's a very rough first read. They were not finished, and so I asked to give that, asked them to give us whatever they could, and so that's why it's a little complicated to understand, but I wanted to get something in the board packet. So, annually, the board reviews the district's audit. That will take place on November 14th, when our auditor will be here to go over the audit in person and highlight the important things for the board to pay attention to. This year, with the delay in property tax collection, it made it hard for the auditor to, to complete everything on time, but he will have it done this week as a completed draft, and that draft will include the summary of the audit, which is called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. That's like at the beginning, and that's the part that the board really wants to pay attention to. That's the part that's easier to understand, and so I'll highlight that when I have Dr. Skinkis share that out with the board. So, at this point, you know, there really isn't a whole lot you necessarily need to look at. And then additionally, the district is required to conduct a single audit again this year due to receiving over $750,000 in federal awards. We do anticipate having to do that next year, and then it really just depends what other grants possibly come up, because we are close to that threshold. So, it's, it's possible we have to continue to do this moving forward.
Yeah, I just knew we were on the cusp, so I thought this was maybe the last year, not that it truly matters. It was just more academic.
We had like 200,000 in SOR III money that we were spending that hit this past fiscal year. I think that's really what put us over the edge.
But we are done with the SOR spending?
Yes.
So, it's other grants that would trigger the single audit?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Okay. And we'll see a draft then, an actual draft?
Hopefully, Dr. Skinkis, we will send it out to the board by Friday.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, my question was related to the headings. I didn't know what to concern myself with or what the numbers were directly related to, so I appreciate that. And I know that paragraph in the actual audit gives a full picture of what was looked at, so I'll look forward to that.
I contemplated about not putting anything in, but I figured to try to be transparent and be better to have something in this board book, so that's why I put the incomplete out.
My question was, how do I not look stupid while trying to look good at this, so...
We need to check, Kristin, how long, how big that is. If it's too big, we'll send it to Mary Ann, and Mary Ann can upload it to the board book. I think we've done that in the past, so that they have access to it.
That might be an easier way to do it, too.
Right.
That way you'll be on the...
It's on our board's protected site, right?
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the very early draft of the audit? I think we can wait till we have something more meaty to jump into. Additional discussion items, any discussion items from anyone? Okay, moving on. We did jump around a little bit and had the essay report. There's no president's report, Dr. Skinkis' superintendent's report.
Thank you. First quarter ended October 13th. Yes, we are already heading into, almost finishing up our second week of the second quarter. Parent/Teacher Conferences were conducted on Thursday, and as stated in my previous reports, it's been a great school year thus far. Cafeteria and Library HVAC Replacement Project, we are still dealing with some open punch list items, and Dr. Smatana's return to work with Birm, and our architect and engineer are just all falling together right at the same time so that we can work with our subcontractor to get a couple things working correctly here before the winter starts, but we still have some open items there. We were supposed to...
I'm kind of related to this, but not really. Are those plantings coming in this fall or this spring?
That's related to the landscape project?
Yes.
The landscape project, those will come in more this spring. They already look like they're trimmed down. But we have a deer problem, but we think we might have solved that. We had somebody go to a local barber shop and pick up hair, spread the hair around by the planting, so we're hoping that will help because they've been eating...
I've never heard of that as a...
Yes.
Caroline's nodding her head like, yes, it works.
Yeah. So, Cafeteria Project, still open. I apologize. I had originally put on air complete. We were supposed to do commissioning Thursday. That's going to be pushed back. Coffee Bar is in, open. Students love it. It seems to be going great, so we're just, now we're working through all the operational kinks and making sure everybody gets their smoothies, lattes, mokas on time and in order, and can get to class on time, so we're working through all that. Kylie Fletcher just stepped out. She was our communications person, released her RB Review, which was a quarterly newsletter last week. Hard copies of the newsletter will be dropped off at all the local libraries, village halls, to hopefully reach the community members who are not accessing electronic updates. We have also been running bi-weekly advertisements in the landmark, and the hard copy and digital versions with upcoming events and the ability to sign up for electronic communication. So, we're really trying to hit that audience that was in the survey that said if they didn't have a student here. So, we're working on that. Thank you to Ms. Seales, Mr. Novak, and Mr. Van Hurst for attending the School Board Workshop on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion last Saturday. Next month, there will be one school board meeting, November 14th, and we will have a few presentations, including the auditor, the parent groups providing their annual update to the Board of Education, so next week's agenda will be a little thicker. I have been asked to present to a peer evaluation, our peer evaluation system we have implemented at RB to the University Illinois Principal Leadership Graduate Program. Ms. Lindquist, Mark Helgason, and Jessica Marison will also be joining me to provide additional insights from both the management and union perspectives on how the model was developed and the positive impact we are seeing here at RB with teacher collaboration and instructional practice. We're actually doing that tomorrow. Superintendent Advisory Councils, Facilities Advisory Council has been scheduled now for November 9th. Thank you to Laura and Nick for getting back to us. And the Finance Advisory Council will also be in the morning of November 9th. Both of those will occur on Zoom. Finally, the board received a copy of the survey and their weekly update to please fill out a quick input survey for the Assistant Principal of Athletics. That survey also went out to all the head coaches, executive board members for the Booster Club, and then each coach was to select one to two student representatives from their program to also fill out the survey. That will give us some input of what stakeholders are looking for in the next Assistant Principal of Athletics. We will be doing a multi-round interview process, and the goal is to have a candidate to the board by January.
Did the Student Advisors to the board also get a copy of that?
I will, if not, I will make sure they do. And that concludes the superintendent's report for October 24th.
I just had one question. Do we know on the parent/teacher conference, did our, did the teachers say they thought they were mostly, that most of the parents participated? Do we know what the participation rate was?
I don't have that in front of me tonight, so I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, so next, yeah.
I'm not sure we would even have tracked it in the past. Remember, it used to be those lines where you stood behind the card table and the...
No, they would check it off in their grade books.
Or you could sign in.
How many of their, how many of parents of their students came? So, we would know.
I know we had to spill over, and some teachers were actually doing conferences on Friday and Tuesday because they didn't have enough time slots.
Yeah, so then, next, I mean, I would hope that they're well-attended and that teachers are able to talk to most parents for the students that they see.
Makes sense. Moving on, Dr. Smatana.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the board with financial information for the month of September, which represents 25% of the fiscal year. Our first report is our monthly summary report, and the total operating revenue for the month was $504,586, with 54% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, 25% from federal and state grant reimbursements, and 21% from local fees. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,573,377, with 72% towards salary and benefits, 7% for building-level supplies, primarily instructional software and textbooks, and 7% for special education tuition. On the next set of reports, the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 6.8% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percentage is slightly higher than this time last year, which was 5.6%. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 29.8% of our budgeted expenditures, and this amount is similar to last year, which was at 28%. The district will continue to deficit spend for the next two months, so that would be October and November, due to the delay in property tax revenue again for the second time, the second year in a row. Normally, we would receive that money in August, but we will be set to receive some of that money in November from the escrow accounts, and then the rest of the money in...
from the escrow accounts and then the rest of the money in December. And in working with the Township Treasurer, due to the fact that we're receiving some money from escrow accounts, he is okay with letting us deficit spend a little bit if we need to, knowing that the money's coming in in December. So we will not need to do a working cash loan this time around. The statement of revenue and expenditure reports for the month of September for all of the board accounts was included. As always, there was a question on this report. The Board of Education Paid Services Account was at 237% of the budget. This was due to the Township Treasurer expense being miskeyed. Those accounts are off by one number, so we're doing a journal adjustment to put that in the right account, and that's almost $16,000. So once that happens, the account will be in budget. But that's exactly what we use these reports for, is catching mistakes like that. There is no questions on the Student Activity Account summary for the month of September, which I included in the report as well. There were a few other...
Can I ask a quick question on the working cash loan, right? Since we're not going to proceed with that, which is good news. Is there anything we need to execute with the Township Treasurer to allow us to deficit spend?
No, because it's just in the Ed Fund that we will...
So the escrow is sufficient to...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The paid quarterly building rental report was included for the board's information. This only includes paid rentals for the first quarter, which is July through September. The surplus for this quarter was $4,538.92. This amount is lower from this time last year, but sometimes with rentals, it's hard to compare year to year and quarter to quarter. Because, for example, we... The pool payment was a few days late, and so that hit in October, which now hits in quarter two. And so that's where things can become a little misleading. And then we also did have a bigger fall rental from last year that chose not to return this year, and that was utilizing the gym space. So it's a combination of both of those things as to why, in comparison from last year, we were down about $10,000.
So I guess my question on that, and this maybe is more for... If anyone on the board has thoughts, is that it's because those pool payment has slipped, or bulldogs, or whoever, it's never quite an accurate year-over-year snapshot of the quarter. So is there a different way to present this? Whether it's, you know, outstanding in receivables or to do the year-to-date and not do it by quarter? Because I feel like every time we get the building rental report, there's always a significant deviation from the prior because it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, I don't... I can...
Why don't we...
I can look into it and bring it to the Finance Advisory Council. It's tricky because a lot of this... A lot of the analysis has to be done by hand. So that's why I paused to kind of wrap my head around what's feasible. But let me put my head together with the business office and see what reports we can pull automatically and then see what we can put together that makes more sense. And then I'll present something to the Finance Advisory Council.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel. I just know that it's a... You know, if there's a group that has not paid their bill in their a quarter, two quarters, and arrears, I would expect you to identify that. But this is... I feel like now for the last couple of years, just there's just been a misalignment from quarter over quarter. So thank you.
And then lastly, I touch on this a little later in School Maintenance Project Grant, but the district is in the process of exploring the feasibility of solar panels. The district administration, myself, Dr. Skinkis, and Birm Gershewski, our building manager, met with a solar consultant through Nania Energy. The district should use Nania Energy for at least the past five years, if not longer, to help us secure energy contracts at the best price, participate in energy incentives. And then they were really instrumental in helping us resolve the energy-related issue when we had the gas issue over Christmas Eve last year. And that was because the gas meter was too small and we couldn't get NiCor out here for the longest time. They were able to step in and help us. So that's the same company that we're using to help us with exploring solar. They have hired a person who only does solar panels. And so we will be presenting that to the Facilities Advisory Council to go over the feasibility study and then discuss that with the entire board. I imagine we'll also bring it to the Finance Advisory Council because there's a cost associated with that as well. And that concludes my report for this evening.
And we're going to discuss in more depth the solar panels on November 9th with the facilities. So we won't have the actual cost. I mean, we could prepare the Finance Advisory Council. I think that meeting is scheduled prior to the facilities. So we could just prepare them. And I think you're covering that a little bit tonight in the maintenance grant.
Correct. And then we do have Nania... The two consultants from Nania are set to present to the board on November 14th if the Advisory Council decides that that's the direction that we want to go.
For the maintenance grant.
For the maintenance grant, but they would discuss the solar panels and the options associated with the solar panels.
If we choose to not do the solar panels on the maintenance grant, then we go a different direction. They could... I'd still think it'd be good for them to present, if not in November, at a later date before we go out to bid. Okay?
Yes.
You think the November agenda is getting...
It's getting thick. Auditor.
The time... The timing isn't really dependent on the grant. It's also dependent on at what point the district... What timeline the district wants to follow for completing the project as well.
Okay. You and I can follow up with that with facilities. I mean, they may just come one month later, to December, or we'll figure that out. I'm just a little worried about...
There's a lot of...
Yeah.
A lot of activity. Okay. Understood. Any questions for Dr. Smetana? Anybody? Anyone? Old business? I don't think we have any on tonight's agenda. Dr. Skinkis?
No, I updated life safety, so...
Well, I jumped in on my landscaping question.
Yeah, the landscaping. If the board has seen it, the landscaping was completed out in front. The initial phase of the patio has been installed. The tables are being installed in November, the permanent picnic tables. And then there is... Dr. Smetana is getting a quote for a wall to be put around about half of the patio so that it provides additional seating besides the five permanent picnic tables.
So moving on to new business, we have the IASB resolutions for the November conference. There's only five on here for consideration this year, which is quite a departure. Because our... Is the board prepared to do a thumbs up, thumbs down on these tonight? You want to do a first read?
Yeah.
Okay.
They just came not too long ago, so...
Okay. So we'll do a... At our next meeting so that Ms. Ruska, as our representative at the conference, knows where the board stands. Like I said, there's only five of them this time, which is shockingly low.
Yeah.
And so we... Six, no, five. Need new glasses.
Five.
Yeah. So we should be prepared to do a quick review of that. I don't think we need to necessarily have any discussion, but make sure we read the packet. There's a lot of information in there. Anything else on those? Nope? School Maintenance Project Grant, also a first read.
This is also a rough first read due to the timing. But as many of you are familiar, we've had the School Maintenance Grant awarded to us before. It's an up-to-$50,000 grant program, but you also have to spend... It's a matching program. So you have to spend $50,000 to get $50,000. So in essence, it has to be a project worth $100,000 if you are going to ask the state for the full amount. Last year, we used the grant to offset updating the auditorium lighting, to LED lighting. The year prior to that, we used it for the car charging stations, EV charging stations, as well as updating the bathroom partitions throughout the building. We've kind of touched on one of the projects already, but we have two projects in mind for the board's consideration. The tricky part with this grant is, unlike the other grants, once the grant is submitted, the grant cannot be amended. And so at all. And so if you deviate from what you initially submit the grant for and you get awarded, you have to give that money back to the state. So that is the tricky nature of this grant. The district also has two years to spend the money from when it was dispersed. So my guess is this grant would be dispersed sometime in December or January. So that would be two years from that that we would have to report that we've spent all of the money. So December of 2025 or January of 2026. This grant also needs board approval, which is why I'm putting it in tonight as a first read and wanted to share some ideas with you. And then we will need approval at the next meeting. So the first option would be to apply the grant towards the installation of solar panels. This is a state priority within the grant. And like I said, we'll discuss it with the Finance and Facility Advisory Councils. The earliest that this project would complete... Could be completed if the board decided to go with solar panels and wanted to move ahead right away would be the summer of 2024. So that's the earliest that that project could be completed because we would have to go out to bid for that project. The second option is for the completion of the additional culinary lab that we have talked about briefly with the board, which would provide more students with the ability to take culinary classes and the ability to receive dual credit, which we currently cannot do because we don't have an industrial kitchen space for the students. The administration's meeting with the district's architect later this week to review a draft mock-up of the culinary lab. And then again, we would share it with the Facilities Advisory Council and discuss the financial aspect with the Finance Advisory Council. The earliest that that project would be completed if the board decided to move forward with that project would be summer of 2025. It would not be this coming summer. Both projects would need to tap into the district's reserves in almost the full capacity to complete the projects. So that's something that, you know, we will need to consider with the board. The second project, the culinary space, is further away in terms of a timeline. But at this point, I would be leaning towards applying the grant for that project as it directly impacts students and possibly should be prioritized over the solar panels, but certainly something for the Finance and Facility Advisory Council and the entire board to weigh in on. So we don't need to make a decision tonight. Like I said, we'll be discussing both projects with the Advisory Councils. But at the November 14th board meeting, we'll be making a recommendation for the grant to include one of these, and I will need the board to vote and approve the grant at that time in order to submit the grant application.
So if you look at this, you know, from a board's perspective, either project will be tapping into our surplus. Remember, we talked about the culinary lab with the industrial kitchen. We're planning that to try to line up with 2025 when some of the bonds come off the books and we'll get an increase in our levy for that one year. And so we will have a surplus. And so using that surplus to do the culinary kitchen, approximately about $1.82 million. Okay? Then the solar panels are probably close to 900 to, let's say, 1.1... You know, around $1 million. Now, those can pay for themselves within about five to seven years of, you know, the lowering our energy costs. So the initial money that we'd be fronting, we'd be lowering our energy costs and make that money back over five to seven years. And then the next 10 to 15 years, we're reducing our energy bills, which will help our overall sustainability and efficiency, right? So I think the thing that Kristin's talking to you about tonight is, as regards to this grant, I mean, nothing has been voted on or discussed, right? Anything can happen. But if there was one that was probably concrete that we know we want to do, it's probably the one for the students, right? We're turning down close to 100 students, if not more, per year that are signing up for foods classes, and we don't have enough space. So we know we need to build a second kitchen. And if we're going to do it, we should do it so that we can have a dual credit program for kids to get the college credit. So that's why she's leaning towards the School Maintenance Grant going towards that. Because if, you know, if you as board members were prioritizing, like, well, the sustainability is an important aspect for us, right? We can go through this, and numbers could change, or the bids could come in way higher for the solar panels, and it may not be the right time to do it. But if we already committed to the grant, we could be on the hook for the grant, right?
This is an annual grant?
No. It's when the state has excess money. They decide to do it, and there's no rhyme or reason.
There's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee it has been running annually for about two or three.
Like, it ran in 2017, and then it ran in 2020, and then it ran in 2022.
2023, we're back to back years.
Okay.
Are there... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if there probably would... There would likely be other grant opportunities available for solar panel installation.
They very well might. You know, the other issue that Kristin and I are exploring, and we'll do this with the facilities group and with the board presentation, when you do solar panels, there's two options, right? You can either install and own the solar panels, which means all the upfront cost is yours. Or they have a third-party program where a third party comes in, installs the solar panels for you, but then they reap a lot of the benefits, right? You'll still have cost savings on your energy bill, but all the comment rebates and those things go to the third party.
Correct.
So if we're going to do this, the right way to do it is us to own them. And we have enough in surplus. I mean, we're talking with both projects about a total of $3 million. Is that fair to estimate?
Yes.
So, I mean, we have that. I mean, we're not flushed, but I mean, we're at close to 60, 58%. So we want to... I mean, we have enough. If you take out the money for the field that we still have in there waiting, hopefully we'll get that answers on that soon.
Right.
I'm thinking the student-first perspective is probably the best way to go.
And none of them would fall under life safety? Because we're coming up on a new tenure?
We are. It's good catch. We are. And I asked if the solar would.
The solar?
And they do not.
No.
They do not.
I guess I'm leaning towards saying $50,000 is a drop in the bucket on...
For both projects.
And either of them.
I mean, we want it. We want that to be a part of it. I guess I'm looking more if it has to be spent in two years. Do we know that the lab, culinary lab is underway?
That would be a concern, yeah.
Well, we wouldn't need to spend the... Yes, we wouldn't need to have the entire project completed. I mean, the goal is to have it completed by summer. Yes, but we just need to show that we've spent $100,000 so that we can keep our 50 and they get their 50.
Okay.
I think with between the design and the design phase probably alone, the district will spend 50 and probably use the other 50 to match, so we could probably be okay there. And that will definitely happen within the next two years if we're looking to start construction in summer of '25, right? So... Don't need to make a decision, I just want you guys to think about that.
And I know that culinary space is a concern with regard to sections and space.
Well, we're cooking on electric stoves. They're the same stoves you would see in an apartment or, you know...
Oh, it's just space, I mean.
Yeah, it's just space, and it's not, right? There's not enough room to do an assembly line or do a prep line and...
And we finally have the staff to offer students dual credit, but we don't have the space and the equipment to do it.
Has all the discussion already been had about how solid dual credit would be with Triton, or are we looking into other avenues? Is there a, just with regard to...
To make sure we don't spend the money and then not get dual credit?
Well, and understand that if the impetus is to do this because of dual credit, is that already fairly well locked down?
I think we've been told that...
Yes, it's mapped out, and we've been working with Triton to make sure we understand what the equipment needs would be to make sure that the course is mapped over to the RB courses.
Certainly easier to do with a new lab, for sure.
Okay.
We also did a site visit to Lyden, who has several dual classes, dual credit classes for culinary with Triton.
They are able to run those right now?
Mm-hmm, and we were able to talk to them about their challenges with dual credit in the culinary space, but then also what equipment they have that is required and what's kind of above and beyond.
Okay.
Are we able to get a temporary setup for the culinary program, find a kitchen that's certified program if we're ready to run sooner?
We do not have that on campus. What do you mean, if we're ready to run sooner?
If we were able to offer those courses and have them count towards dual credit, is there a certified kitchen where we could...
Not on campus.
Not on campus or close in the community?
We have not explored that, to be honest with you, and that's something that you're... That would be a big thing to try to pass kids for 50 minutes. Remember, you only got 50-minute class.
Yeah, that would also pull kids from two other classes, because they'd have to get transported there, so they'd have to eat a class period to go there and eat a period to transport back.
But our cafeteria wasn't, wouldn't count?
Well, they're, yeah, but that's being used for our satellite program and the prep of our meals for our students, so you can't have a class in there if they're cooking and prepping and doing all that.
But at the end of the day?
Our cafeteria is used 3:30, 4:00. I mean, they're prepping the meals for the next day, they're prepping the satellites for the next day, cleaning each day. Yeah. So we're already through '23, '24, so really you're talking one more year, and then this would be hopefully '25, '26 would be ready to rack and roll. So...
That would be fantastic.
And there's a limit, you can only apply for one of the grants.
Correct.
Is that correct? But you could, if they offer it next year, then you could do this grant towards the solar.
Absolutely.
Or in two years or whatever.
Well, assuming depending on the timing of solar, if we, if the board had decided to already start it.
True.
Worst-case scenario is you have to give the state the money back.
So are we making, is next week...
We'll make the recommendation to you on the 14th after we...
That would be first re-recommendation.
This is, no, it's got to be approved. That's why we wanted you to have this discussion today.
I'm sorry, not for the grant, I'm talking about for solar panels.
Yes.
Solar panels, if we come to you on the 14th with the solar panels, we'll have the speakers here to give you...
And yes, that would be like a first read.
Okay. But you'd be done applying after first read, expecting that we're on board, which I am, but I need to make sure that we agree to that.
I just think the way this has all fallen out, and with Kristen's absence and now coming back and returning, I'm thinking it's better to probably spend the $50,000 on the kitchen, because there's a lot of moving pieces with the solar.
Sure.
But we'll have a recommendation for you on the 14th, but I want you to be prepared to hear on both, should we need to apply for a grant.
Yeah, I would just be concerned about the timing with the kitchen.
That was my only concern.
That becomes a use-it-or-lose-it scenario, right? The solar is...
But like we already, he said, like, with all the expenses beforehand with the architect and the planning and all that stuff.
Within the first 18 months, we'll have over $50,000 being built from the architect on design, engineering.
I mean, the other thing to consider too is if...
200 or 50?
We have to spend 100, and then he would give us 50 back.
Well, could we buy the equipment? Like, when we did the HVAC systems, we bought the equipment before we installed it, because it was cheaper to buy it up now and outweigh...
Correct, we could.
So if we were buying the stoves and things like that...
Absolutely.
And if the board decides to move forward with both projects, then, you know, this discussion is kind of a moot point.
Right, unless there were another opportunity next year, right?
Correct. And we don't, we don't know when the opportunities come up, and we also don't know the timing.
Don't know if it would be approved either, so...
When they come out, the timing is not necessarily the same.
It has to be a new project, right? It can't be...
Yes, it cannot be an existing project.
I think we got some good... I think even just talking through that, it helps us for our thought process on our recommendation. I think that's the last item.
It looks like it is. There's no additional visitors here? No discussion items were requested? Any consideration of items for future meetings from anyone? Seeing none. Matters for closed session, we have appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations and school safety. Mr. Durkin, could you read us in?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering closed session matters as presented in the October 24, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Hoorn.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Ospick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoorn?
Yes.
And Ms. Zales?
Yes. Okay. 7:55.